Good afternoon, this is the Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee. I am Councilman Isaac Schleifer, Chair of the Committee. To my right is Chairman Mark Conway. To my left is Councilwoman Ramos. To her left is Chairman Bullock. We are going to start with 24-0554, Building Fire and Related Codes Corrective Amendment. And so who from the administration will be speaking on this?
DHCD.
Ty Lor. Who's speaking on behalf of that bill? On behalf of?
Jason Redd, representing DHCD. Would you like me to go into why it was called for in the first place?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I'm going to read this off our bill report because we got it in there really succinctly. So in its current form, the Building Fire and Related Code, Section 2-103, states that if a permit extension request is made within the first 90 days, then that extension will cost $25. But if the application is made between day 31 and 90, the extension will cost 50% of the original cost of the permit fees. That language is obviously in conflict, kind of doesn't make any sense there. And so this corrective amendment will get across the original intent of that section. And what it will say is if the request is made within the first 30 days, then that extension will cost you $25. But if the application is made between day 31 and 90, then the extension will cost you 50% of the original cost of those permit fees.
And so that is the only change to this bill?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion? Are you not on the committee? Oh, okay. We don't have a quorum, so you guys are good to go unless you're staying here for the next bill also. Okay? So we will wait seven minutes to start the next hearing. We'll be in recess for seven minutes. All right, we're back in session for Bill Number 24-0554, Building Fire and Related Codes Corrective Amendment. Do I have a motion on this?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Torrance, seconded by Ramos.
Chair Schleifer.
Yes.
Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett, Mr. Costello are absent. I suppose that Milton is absent. Member Ramos.
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance.
Aye, if I can explain my vote. Thank you. I want to vote yes, but I just want to make sure it is explicitly understood that the reason why this correction needed to be happened is because this was brought up prior to when we were passing the building code and no one paid careful attention. So I just want to reiterate that this was brought up as a concern prior to it needing to be done. That's it.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway.
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Chair, four votes, any affirmative, no negatives. We can go to second reader at the next meeting.
All right, on to the next topic, 24-0576, Historic Preservation/Conservation Districts Establishment. I'll start off by turning it over to the bill sponsor to explain what this bill is and what it does. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon to everyone who's here. Conservation districts is a concept that's been around for quite some time, but we have not utilized it here in Baltimore. For the last eight years of my time on the council, I've served as the City Council's representative to the Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation. And in that time, you know, we've seen that a number of communities have been able to benefit from the historic districts. At the same time, there are a number of neighborhoods, particularly in West Baltimore where I represent, as well as other neighborhoods, that are equally as historic but have been left out of that process. Part of the reason why some neighborhoods have not gone for historic designation has to do with the cost associated with it. And so the conservation district is a way for us to recognize the historic nature of many of our communities, to have some uniform guidelines, but not be as stringent and as restrictive as an overall local historic district. So with that being said, I do look forward to having the support of our colleagues, as you can see by this packed chamber, that there are a lot of people in community who see this as an important and vital piece in terms of recognizing the historic nature of our neighborhoods. I would also like to note that this is also something that is supported in the comprehensive plan that our council just moved forward for our city. And I know that we have CHAP executive director and staff here can also answer any questions that go into further detail if need be. So again, thank you for the opportunity and I look forward to this robust discussion.
So can you also just go into the mechanism, how it works?
Sure. And I can also defer to CHAP executive director, but what I will say is this is a community-driven process, so this is not a top-down process in which designation is placed upon a community. At this juncture, it will be up to a community to say that this is something they want, to then come up with their own guidelines of what they believe would be beneficial in those communities. After that is set forward, then there will be an introduction of an ordinance to then create that conservation district moving forward.
So who in the community, when you say the community comes up with it, is there a specific percentage of signatures required to do it, to vote on it, or how does that?
So I'll defer to CHAP staff, but what I will say is we look at our community organizations. I would say when we have put forward historic designations, that has been at the behest of neighborhood stakeholders, like our neighborhood associations, community development corporations, other stakeholders who are in the community. But again, I'll allow Eric Holcomb, if you have some things you want to say, to do that as well.
Okay, so we'll go through each of the agencies. We'll start with CHAP to explain.
Yeah, let me just, thank you so much for being here, and I really appreciate everyone here reviewing this bill. We're really excited about the conservation districts, but to really jump in and talk about how this is, how conservation districts would be created, it would mirror the local historic designation process. And that process begins with really an extensive deliberate community outreach and consensus-building process. So we don't even really get to any formal work on reports or scheduling public hearings at CHAP until we go through several month-long process. At the very least, sometimes it would even take a year. What that means is CHAP staff would go out to community associations and provide information. I have been doing this actually for several communities already, talking about local designation and conservation district designation if this bill passes. So with that in mind, we do a lot of outreach by speaking with the community, making sure they have their information. We document everything. We give information to provide for emails, newsletters. And then, once the community association decides to become a conservation district, they would write a formal letter to the City Council member, Mayor's Office, and myself. And then once that is there, we would create, we would begin sort of what I call the formal process. And that formal process would include a letter out to every property owner that, and we use property owners as the ones that pay the taxes, so that's the addresses that we use, and asking them to submit their support or opposition through a survey. And then once we do the survey, we take that, staff will take that survey, analyze that survey, take a little bit more information, and then we would schedule a first CHAP hearing. At that first CHAP hearing, we would look and the commission would decide, did staff and the community association do enough public outreach, enough consensus building? Is there enough support here? And then once that is done, then we would move into a second public hearing. And that's really to cross the Ts and dot the Is and make sure that the history is accurate, to make sure that for conservation districts that we're all in agreement about what alterations that we want to review and approve. And then we go through a second public hearing, and after that, we would request ordinance to be introduced, and it would follow the City Council ordinance process. Any more questions about that?
All right. Yeah, I got a lot of questions. We'll go ahead, Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to clarify, so this doesn't actually name or designate any historic districts yet, it just creates a mechanism to identify and evaluate whether or not we want to and a process to do so?
Correct. It allows the mayor and city council to create conservation districts. So once, if this bill is passed, then CHAP staff would be working with the city council folk and the neighborhoods, and then from there, we would create the individual districts.
And they would only be created through the council?
Correct. The only way to establish a conservation district would be through city council ordinance.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And so just, let me just jump ahead for a second. So once all of that is met, and I have questions about the process, the homeowners in that encatchment area, are they bound by the same rules as current CHAP districts?
The answer is no. Because in a conservation district designation process, CHAP staff and the neighborhood would identify the historic character-defining features of that neighborhood. And then from there, we would create a list of the alterations that the neighborhood would want to be reviewed and approved. That list could be as small as new construction, demolition, and large additions, and it could also be as long as those three plus masonry work, plus cornices, windows, all the other alterations that may occur on a property. So, but it is a deliberative process that we would create that list of alterations that CHAP would review and approve, and that would be part of the process.
So ultimately, it would end up being similar to the current CHAP district? So like the ones in my district that I get complaints about on the regulars, somebody wants to replace windows, they can't do that with regular windows, they have to get, you know, more expensive and specific ones. So those kind of items then become required in those areas, once that ordinance passes, just like they are on a historic block right now?
The difference between a local designation, a local historic district designation and conservation district designation is, in a local historic district, every exterior change is reviewed and approved by CHAP. And, you know, that's it. If it's on the outside, we approve the placement of HVAC condenser units. In a conservation district, we would only review and approve those items that we worked with the community to identify. So if windows was a part of that, that would be, if they chose not to include windows, then we would not put windows in there. So it's a less stringent way to control, to preserve the historic character of a neighborhood.
Right. So obviously, within that process and with these restrictions, it obviously becomes a lot more costly to renovate and rehab. Do they receive the same historic tax credits? Once they are designated as a conservation district, do they then qualify for those tax credits that help offset some of those additional costs?
That is correct. This bill makes the historic properties and conservation districts eligible for the tax credit. And that's one of the, and also just to maybe step back a wee bit here, one of the reasons we want to create that conservation district is because we don't want to put the undue financial burden on these property owners. And this is one way to do it, because we could pick and choose where we should put our preservation dollars.
Right, all right, I get that, but I'm saying there's nothing about a historic district that makes it less expensive to renovate than one that doesn't have any restrictions?
The historic preservation tax credits were created to offset the increased expenses for historic restoration. The other thing too, I mean, we could talk more on this, but the other thing is, in local historic districts and even national registered districts, you do see that the property values are maintained far better than in nonhistoric districts throughout the city and throughout the country. Those studies have been done in many cities across the country, and it always says that the property values are maintained and increased at a steadier rate in historic districts than in nonhistoric districts.
Has there been a study done in Baltimore City?
Yes, yes. In our tax credit study, we have a chapter on historic designation and what that does.
Can you forward that study to myself, to the committee?
Sure.
To the entire council either way? Because I've just, I mean, I've seen directly, in my district, that's certainly not the case. And so I just want to review that study to just understand that component better. I almost bought a house on a historic block in my district, and one of the reasons the house was significantly less than market value was because it needed renovations, and the renovations would be significantly more because it was on a historic block, on bank growth, which I'm sure you're familiar with. And so because of that, people weren't interested in buying that house, which is why it sat on the market for a long time. And so I would be curious to see that study, to see how that pans out. My next question is, you were talking about the block needing, like the neighborhood and others that you would send a mail or two would need to agree to accept this designation. What percentage of those homeowners in whatever encatchment area you define would have to agree in order for it to go into place?
Our current process right now is that we only move forward, well, we've only moved forward local historic districts that had a healthy majority of the property owners that participated in the survey. And I'd say 15, 20 years ago, we had sort of an online petition, and that was still the same. We were looking for a healthy majority.
So what number is a healthy majority?
We don't have a number. I mean, for example, let's say 35 or 40% of the folks in a neighborhood take the survey, we would analyze that 35 or 40% of the folks out in that survey and give those numbers to the commission, and the commission would, the commission has only approved of designations that had a healthy majority of those folks.
So, and this, they would be responding to that, you said, by mail?
They would be responding, yes, by mail. Right, well, we sent out the letters to all the places that get their tax bill.
Okay. And so you send them just one letter?
By this time, I think we send three letters throughout the process. And the other thing too is...
Are they sent, like certified, so you can at least confirm that they've received it?
We don't, no, we don't do certified. The other thing that we do though is we have our extensive outreach, so we make sure that everybody knows what's occurring in that community. Folks, a lot of these neighborhoods would do flyers, will flyer everything, they would put it on their Facebook page, they would put it in their newsletters, they would talk about it. I've been going to block parties in one neighborhood, so every block on this one neighborhood who was interested, I go and meet with that block. And everybody on that block is notified of the effort and they're notified of the meeting. So those are the types of the extensive outreach and consensus building that we do prior to the mailing.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'll use my district as an example. So one of the benefits I see to the conservation districts is that one of my communities really wants to be able to have better review of some of the things that are happening in the neighborhood, because they're getting, we're getting a lot of rehabs, which is great. And we're part of an urban renewal plan, but there isn't that enforcement of the urban renewal plan. And it's not extensive, it's a few things that the community would like to see. So my understanding of how this works is that you would engage the community, the community would say, yes, we want to make sure that people don't paint their homes, that the windows are in a certain way, and the, or let's not use windows, because it doesn't have to be windows, but that they can't paint their homes different colors, right? Let's just stick it right there. And so then, there would be a letter that then goes out to all the residents saying, we want to be a conservation district, this is what the conservation district will do. And then the survey, this is my question, so the survey then, it's a healthy majority of those who answered the survey, not those who we gave the survey to?
Correct. Because we give the survey to every property owner within the potential boundaries of a district. But we can't make 100% of people respond. You can't make anybody respond.
No, no, I know, that's why I was confused. I just want to make sure, because it's very hard to get to 50% of a survey answers.
Right. But we make sure that everybody has the opportunity to respond.
Uh-huh, right. And so then, let's say the conservation district is established, because the next step is the two CHAP meetings, there's the, then there's the ordinance, we get the conservation district established, and then somebody wants to rehab a house in this neighborhood, and the permit office first gives all the permits over to CHAP to review, right? And to say, this is the rehab that they want, they want to paint the house, you say, nope, can't paint the house gray, or pink, or blue in this neighborhood, so send it back to the permit office, permit office says to the person, no, you can't do that? Or does the person, the rehabber work directly with you?
We would make sure the rehabber works directly with us.
Okay, so they file a permit, and then they're all referred to you?
Yeah, they would file a permit and an authorization to proceed application.
Right, okay. Yeah. And the incentive really, I think, is the tax credit. Because we do have this issue where some people are doing stuff without permits, and yet, to be able to preserve some of the historic features of the neighborhood without being too restrictive, then folks could go through this process, and the incentive is that they get a tax credit. And, you know, obviously, there's the, how the math works. But I think that seems to make sense in terms of, so it's not as restrictive as a historic, I shouldn't say restrictive, I like history, I think we should preserve everything. But it's not, but it allows for the community to be a part of this, that's how I understand it.
That's correct. The community would work with staff to create the list of the alterations we would review and approve. For example, in one community, if it's a rowhouse community full of brick, we may want to say, any alterations to the brick should be reviewed and approved by CHAP. That's really a conservation science issue more than anything. We want to make sure that the masonry is treated properly so it stays healthy. And then that's where we could say, painting of that brick is prohibited.
Right.
Because it's bad for the building.
Gotcha. Do we, I think I've asked for this before, and I did not see it in the bill file, a chart, that's a comparison between the historic districts and the conservation districts, just to be clear for the public, but also for us, what the differences are. And I think that will be helpful, because yes, I've heard the complaint about the windows as well, but that's not what we're asking for here unless the community wants the windows to be wood windows instead of vinyl. But in this case, so anyway, I just would like a side-by-side, I think that will be helpful.
Absolutely. I'll get that, I will get you that and the tax credit report by tomorrow, sometime tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
And so properties that are in on a block that pass this designation, is there any prevention, is there anything preventing them from being knocked down, like a vacant that's on a block that has gotten this designation? Are you still able to get a standard demolition permit and knock it down, or will you be prevented from doing so because it has this designation?
I believe that in every conserv, well, in every conservation district, we would make sure that demolition of, let's say, the whole structure or a large portion of the structure would be reviewed and approved by the commission. Now, the commission has approved demolition in circumstances, but yeah, they would have to get approval by CHAP if they wanted to demolish a property.
Is it more difficult than demolishing a standard vacant? Like, is it more difficult to get that approved than a house that needs to be taken down for obvious reason, structural issues? Are they required to do like what we see downtown over here up the block where there's, you know, a piece of metal holding up the facade of the building and then renovate it? Or would they be able to easily get an approval to demo that vacant?
There's two answers to that. First and foremost, the building official has the authority to demolish any building that is an imminent threat to public safety. And they, and all I get is a cell phone call from Eric Guntreiter saying, sorry, Eric, I'm going to have to demolish this building. I'm like, okay, because, you know, we're not going to get in the way of public safety. The second answer is, if it's not an imminent threat to public safety, then they would go through the CHAP process. And in that CHAP process, all those variables and issues would be part of the analysis for a decision. So, for example, I mean, we've had buildings in bad shape, and the commission said, yeah, this is technically and financially infeasible to restore, you have your approval. There's been times when the commission said, you haven't provided enough information, or the information you provided doesn't, well, they could say that the building is still structurally sound, and it can still make a reasonable rate of return on your project. And so, no, you can't tear it down.
Right. Okay, and getting back to these letters that go to the property owners, does it, when it outlines what they're getting into, does it outline the cons as well as the pros? Obviously, we understand preserving certain, the value of preserving certain historic features, but does it also paint a real picture for the homeowners, the reality that, A, this project will take longer and also will cost more? Meaning, it comes at a price, it's not, it takes a lot more time and it costs more.
Right.
So when you're signing up or like signing that, at this address, we want this designation, are they getting that clear picture?
They are getting a clear picture of what their responsibilities are in a local historic district. And I say it that way because not every, in fact, I would say the majority of alterations in a local historic district does not cost more than in a nonhistoric district, or nominally more, you know? So if you are painting your door, it's the same cost, you know? And the other thing too is, if the windows in a local historic districts are of a higher quality than windows placed in a nonhistoric district, those windows are going to last four or five times longer, which will cost savings in the long run.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I understand if you're painting a door, but I'm talking about the actual real cost. I mean, when the complaints that we get in my office are, how much more expensive it is to replace a specific type of roof, or to fix a roof, or to fix the windows, or to fix certain features of the facade, or what kind of materials they need to use for an addition, those kind of things, the materials and labor and process just costs a lot more. But getting back to the percentages piece, what prevents, how do the homeowners who live on those blocks, how are we ensuring with this legislation that, A, they are going to be notified correctly? Meaning that they do receive these letters and that there's a process? Because we are making a material change to their property and to their cost of living, so what are we doing to ensure that they find out and they know about it and that they are going to take it? Because if we don't have any controls in place, such as this requires a certain amount of people on the block to, A, respond, and then a certain percentage of those who responded to support it, then how do we know that, you know, and I'm not talking about you in particular, I mean, you've been doing this a long time, you're a professional, but who's to say the next person comes in, or one, a new employee comes in and, you know, thought they mailed it out, but they forgot to put stamps on the envelopes, or whatever it may be, and people aren't... mean, you've been doing this a long time, you're a professional, but who's to say the next person comes in, or one, a new employee comes in, and, you know, thought they mailed it out, but they forgot to put stamps on the envelopes, or whatever it may be, and people aren't notified? And the only people that find out about it are the ones who went to a community association meeting, or went to a block party. And then, next thing you know, the value of your property and the cost of living in that property has changed, and you had purchased that house, not knowing that all of a sudden, that, that's going to change. So how do we not have a process that lays that out? I mean, right now, if you want speed bumps on your block, you need a certain amount of signatures. There's a, there's more of a criteria, it seems, than, than doing something like this. So what kind of controls can we put in place to ensure that they are receiving this information if you're not going to be sending it certified, or there's not a specific labeled engagement, and also a specific percentage? Because if I lived on a block that got a designation like this, and I was not aware of it, and I came to you to complain about it, and you told me that, you know, it's a healthy majority, and I find out that, you know, only five people on my block knew about it, and three out of five agreed to it, so that's a majority. But then I find that in the next neighborhood, every single person knew about it, and, you know, and 90% of the people agreed to it, I would be, I would be quite upset, and I would actually probably take legal action against the city for materially changing the, the value and the cost of living in my house. So let me just ask the law department, I guess, first. Is there, is there any, any grounds for a case if the engagement was not done in a certain way, or there's an inconsistent engagement and an inconsistent process that materially affects the value of someone's property?
Without looking into it, without doing research, I can't answer your question. I'm not sure whether this actually reflects or affects the value of the property and the use of the property. So, like I said, I would have to get back to you, and I can do so if you would like.
Yes, please. Because there's certainly a difference. If I purchase a property on a block, and then I have, you know, I contacted an architect, and I have plans to build an addition and renovate the property, and then one of these designations pass, and all of a sudden, my cost to construction doubles or triples, I purchased that property with the assumption that I was going to be able to afford the renovation and construction to that property, and now the city made a change that I didn't even know about, because they didn't come to my house, or they said they put it in the mail and never received it. And so, I would like to know if, if the city could be held liable at that point, especially if I can establish that there's an inconsistent process between one neighborhood doing it and another neighborhood doing it.
I would just like to state, in, in our thoughtful, deliberate process of community outreach and consensus building, everything is documented, everything is placed in the staff report, and that staff report is also given to city council. So the, the city council, when they're weighing to create a conservation district or a local district, has the, has a clear picture and a clear understanding of everything that staff has done, everything the community has done, to make sure everybody knows what's occurring in the neighborhood that is, when it's becoming a local historic district. And the second thing is, is we follow the best practices of historic preservation throughout the country.
Gotcha, okay. Next up, Conway, and then Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had one quick question. I noticed it wasn't referred to finance. I'm curious, does this have any impact on your office, the additional work of setting this up, and is there a potential cost to operating?
The cost to operate, or to manage a conservation district program would be staff costs. So, yes, and there, there most likely will be, we will need to increase our staff. Luckily, this year, of course, as, as you probably know, the Department of Finance is doing a study of fees throughout the city, and one of them is ATP fees, the Authorization to Proceed fees, and also the tax credit fee. So those things are being reviewed and analyzed. So I think those will increase enough to help chap, and, you know, with the help of city council, to actually hire another staff person.
Yeah, I, I generally like the idea of having this body sort of think about broader districts, and like, for the story that we tell about our city and its history. I think it is important for us to craft that story and acknowledge, you know, all of that. That said, I, I can't say what impact that may have on your office. We're talking about outreach. We're talking about mailers, or other things like that. And I just don't know what that may mean by way of additional expense. And so, I guess, to, to that effect, I'll ask, Tyler, can we see if we can get a, a report from finance on this? Just, I think it would just be prudent of us, if, if we did do it, to have that, that information. I, I like the idea. I just want to, we don't have it, so it'd be, it'd be helpful.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Councilman Torrance?
I just want to make sure. So Eric and I have gone back and forth for a year over this. Tyler, I just want to make sure the administration is aware that my, my understanding from planning is that they will be seeking funding for low-income residents who cannot afford to take out loans. Because while this is a great thing, and people get access to the $50,000 tax credit, to put the cost up front first, and put a burden on someone who may be a limited income senior, or a person who has limited means right now, given the climate that we are in, in terms of a second Trump presidency, or the fact that, like, things are tight now, how does that look? Because I think that there needs to be some subsidy, or some type of low-interest loan that the city could do, or partners can do, and it has to be more intentional. I, as someone who lives in the chap district, it's actually not more expensive to actually do these things. I'll give you an example for my colleagues. I have a neighbor who just, instead of replacing his slate roof, installed a Tesla roof, which was $56,000. And the tax credit was $50,000, so he paid $6,000 out of pocket. A lot, actually, it's become a trending aspect, and that people are replacing their roofs with Tesla roofs, because you can get the slates alternative, and it looks like slate. I, myself, opted for the nice little gray roof that looks exactly like slate, so I don't have to pay the full amount. But it is, it is a conversation. I'll give you an example, Mr. Chair. I'll put my own personal business out there. I, my siding right now is estimated at $56,000 for replacing the siding, because my entire house is wooden siding. It's the original siding from 1970. So we have to replace the entire siding. But because we want to weatherize it, it went from $30,000 to $50,000. It depends on what your, what your menu is. Temporal wood siding right now is $16,000 to replace on a 3,000-square-foot house. So the cost is there. It's just, what would you like to add on to it? And I know, right now, the other piece that I would like to see from planning is a plan in terms of educating people to. Ash Burton does well with telling us how we access through our local, local chap committee to start the process to get access to the actual tax credit at the state level, for the public's understanding. You have to be approved by your neighbors before you get an ATP. And then on top of that, you got to get approval from the city. And then, once the city gives you approval, you got to send a nice approval from the city to the state, to then get a tax ID number for you to get your refund for the $50,000 in your taxes. So I think that we need to educate people on what that looks like, because then, that allows us to have that conversation. In my neighborhood, I know that a lot of people are going to do work in the fall, because they're going to take out a loan in the fall. But they have their approval and everything from the city, as well as our local chap committee, so that when their tax return is filed in January, the $50,000 is hidden in their account, and they're paying off this loan. So I think that's the education that we'd have with residents, about how to share the costs, but also have access to the tax credits, too. But on top of that, my question for you, if we do do upgrades into a home in a chap, in a conservation district, will they be given the same opportunity to lock in the cost of improvements to their property, too, with the chap tax credit on the end of the city? So if I may substantially increase the value of my house by $40,000, or 40% of the household, will my taxes today be locked in for five years, and I don't eat, I don't eat that cost right away when the tax assessment comes around? So that's a question I need to make sure that is mindful, too, in this legislation.
Yeah. The, the answer to your last question is, every historic property in a conservation district would be eligible for the historic preservation tax credit, which is actually a 10-year tax credit to your property, not five. It's, it's, I think, the most lucrative one that, that we have. And, but the, the, the catch is there, that they are eligible for that, for that tax credit, but they have to go through the process. So it's just not a buy-ride tax credit. They have to fill out the forms, they have to do the review, they have to meet the guidelines, and that kind of thing. So the same thing that, that we would, we would do, but yes, they would be eligible for that. The, the second thing I just want to make sure that I state is that we do have economic and financial hardship clause in our ordinance, and we do use it on, on, for folks on limited means. We do not want to kick somebody out of their house because they can't put on the appropriate roof, and we do allow for the less expensive materials, for, for the financial hardship reasons.
Okay, I'm not familiar with that. So why would they, I mean, Councilman Torrance is saying that it wasn't, it wouldn't cost anymore, so why would they need a financial hardship exemption?
I think we're mixing, mixing our apples and oranges here. What, what I'm talking about, and I apologize if I confuse folks, what I'm talking about is, if we have a property owner that's retired, living in a local historic district, and they need a new roof, and they have a slate roof on there, and we know that they are on limited means, we have been empowered by the commission to approve less expensive, we are allowed to approve an asphalt roof. And in fact, we have pretty much approved asphalt roofs in, in residential areas. But there are those cases, that's what I'm talking about. If somebody can only afford the cheap vinyl windows, and they need new windows, then we allow them. But there is a process that goes into place with that.
Okay, so they got to go through a more timely, costly process to then use what everybody else in the city can use?
Not, not more costly. And timely, you know, could be one hour to, if it's, if it's a complicated rehab, then it'd be more, more time with that, and that's staff time.
Only one hour to go through the whole chap process?
If, if, if somebody gives us an application for, let's say, a roof replacement, and they give us the information that they're on very limited means, yes, we can make that determination very, very quickly.
The other thing that came up was a loan to, to help offset this. So I guess my first question would be to Tyler. Does the administration have any plans to create a loan program for historic districts?
This is my first time hearing to that. I have to take that back. I can't speak on that right now.
All right, so if you can follow up with the committee and let us know. And Eric, does the, does the grant, does the, the credit that helps offset the additional cost, does that also allow for part of the reimbursable, or part of the expense, to be interest payments? So if you take out a loan to do the construction, and it's a, you know, it's $45,000 project, and you're paying $3,000 in interest, are you allowed to get a, do they qualify you for that $48,000, and include the interest, or is it only for the construction portion of it?
There's, there's two answers for that. One of them is, you know, there's the homeowners in local historic districts, or, or in, or in conservation districts, most likely will be, and I say most likely, because we need to work with the trust, the Maryland Historical Trust, on the conservation district base of it, because we want to, we want the Maryland Historical Trust to make eligible conservation districts for the state historic preservation tax credit. There's two tax credits, the local and the state, and they're very different. The local tax credit is a property tax credit, and that just offsets the, what you would pay in property taxes from the pre-rehab to the post-rehab of, of a property.
All right, the phase in. So, but does the state tax credit, or either tax credit, allow you to include the interest expense as part of our, as part of that tax credit?
The, the local tax credit is, is calculated on the difference between the pre-rehab appraisal of a property, and the post-rehab appraisal of the property, and not on anything about lending, or mortgage rates, or anything. I would have to double-check with the state. I'm not sure.
I can answer the question. No. So it's $50,000 cap, and you only are accessible to it eight, every 18 months. So it's 50, 50,000 max. If your project is at $85,000, you get 50, and you're responsible for the 35. But you can't actually submit another application for the 35 above it.
But that's for the Maryland, right?
That's the Maryland one. But with the city one, it is just an offset with your property tax.
So for the Maryland one, if your project is $45,000, and your interest is 5,000, will that qualify for the 5,000?
That's what your total repayment is, yes. So it's $50 cap, $50,000. You get up to $50,000. They have added that.
So they'll factor in the interest that you pay?
They have.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I just need to clarify. So you want to know if the administration plans to fund a loan program?
Yeah. So Councilman Torrance had mentioned that, obviously, with this whole process, in order to make this work, and, you know, in, in areas where people would need a loan, he said that there would be, sometimes, they were talking about some loan program to loan people the money to do the renovations, while they're still waiting for the credit to come back. Because I can just tell you, I had a constituent in Mount Washington, did the renovations on one of these properties, and there was some type of, one thing was done, and I don't know if it was a timeline thing, or some other issue, they didn't end up getting the credit in the end. And so, they were just out the difference. And so, here, what the councilman is saying is that if the city was going to, that the city was considering, I believe he said, to create a loan program.
For low income?
Right, for low, yeah, that's what I'm talking about. For low-income homeowners, to be able to borrow money from the city until they are reimbursed the tax credit. So I just wanted to know if that was something that was in the works or not.
And they'd be waiting for reimbursement from the state?
Yes. And when they got that reimbursement back, the 50,000 back, then they would pay the city back, presumably with, with interest. So if you can follow up on that, I appreciate it.
But that was for the Maryland, not for this.
So if I may, the challenge to planning from the last budget hearing was to work with DCHD, because of all the opera dollars, as well as the other subsidy that we've given them, to look at how we can help supplement with not either our federally funded, because we, we give CBD, CBG money to some of the housing counselors, as well such as like NHAs or others, seeing if those partners could set up a program where, if they're a low-income seniors, we can offset some of that cost, while they're applying for these tax credits, so that there's not actually a loss, and then the people have greater access to the program. So I just told them to be creative in looking at how we can partner with others, or create our own loan process. Because, to be honest with you, Mr. Chair, the Department of Housing and Community Development can actually issue mortgages in the city of Baltimore. We gave, they've given that power by the city charter. So they could actually do it themselves. So it's just looking at how creatively we can do it.
I suggest they start with just issuing permits on time, before they get into any new, new business streams.
Yeah. Could we just, can I, somebody just send me that committee request formally, maybe councilman, so I don't misrepresent what it is you're asking for?
It was sent in June.
Oh, can you send it to me, please, again?
I will happily send it again, because I had this conversation this budget season and the prior to last budget season. And I'm pretty sure no one's factored into their conversations generating the current 2020, the 26 budget.
Got it. Thank you.
All right, so I won't hold my breath on, on the program starting, if we're waiting for, for this many months, just for an email. All right, we'll, we'll get back to this conversation. Just wanted to give other agencies an opportunity to, to give their report. Do we have anybody here from the Planning Commission?
I'm, there is a Planning Commission hearing today, so I'm pinch hitting for Mr. Tezo here. And they have resolved that the Planning Commission concurs with the recommendations of its departmental staff, and recommends that City Council Bill 24-0576 be approved by the City Council.
All right.
Favorable report.
Okay. And, and what, DHCD, what's your position?
Jason Wright, representing DHCD, we respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Okay, thank you. BDC?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Lica Fets for the Baltimore Development.
I'm Lica Fetz for the Baltimore Development Corporation. We stand by our favorable report.
Next up, BMZA?
Tyler Chanel, Mayor's Office of Government Relations, representing BMZA, they stand by their report of no report.
Why, why don't they take a position?
I read it. But because they are a quasi-judicial agency, and they do not take a stance on these bills.
I mean, they do weigh in on legislation, which is why we refer bills to them for a report. So that part, I would just tell you, is just not, that's not correct. They do obviously issue reports. And they're certainly materially impacted by legislation like this. It alters their general process and what they can approve and how they can approve. So I'm just curious why they wouldn't. Like, you can't just go to the BMZA to put in a renovation or something like that in a historic district without getting prior approvals from CHAP and others. So I don't, I guess I would like some clarity on why they gave a report not to give a report.
Yeah, I can follow up with Rebecca and get back to you.
Gotcha. Okay, and then the next would be finance. Councilman Conway asked about finance. Is there a reason the bill was not referred to finance?
The mayor's office has no control over the referral of bills. That is the council president's office.
Gotcha. And so do we know roughly how much money we're talking about? This is a question for Eric, probably. Eric, do you know roughly what it would cost to implement this? And also what the outreach staffing would look like?
I can tell you, you know, in the daily process of managing and running a conservation district program, 95% of the cost would be staffing costs.
Oh, sure, yeah.
And, I mean, there's going to be calls for the mailing and things like that, but that's sort of in our mailing budget, too. But I'll follow up after I talk with finance.
Yeah, I mean, I assume you need not only somebody to manage it, but you also need multiple outreach folks who are going to do the door knock and who are going to do that, because obviously if they start popping up all over the city, then you guys can't handle that kind of volume and that kind of outreach to do it correctly. Although we don't really have a definition yet of what correctly looks like. But once there is some type of definition of correctly, you would obviously need staffing. So if you can get back to the committee on just what that looks like, based on different models of if, you know, we get this many applications a year, this is what it would look like, or if we got that many. Because the last thing we'd want is for, to create a program, force people into it, the process not have the resources to do the outreach, and then we create more headaches and challenges for those who are just simply trying to, you know, preserve the historic nature of an area. And then without that process being done, it also would prevent certain things from getting approved in certain projects. And we just need a clear picture on what that looks like, so we know what we're getting into.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a follow up?
Sure.
Are you anticipating adding staff for the conservation district program?
Of course. We are anticipating asking to add staff, yeah. So we have to go through that whole process.
Okay, so that's where we're going with all of our questions. Do we know how many staff you're asking for?
Right now, it would just be one. And then if the conservation district program grows, then we, or let's say it grows and the tax credit projects increase significantly.
Right, but so, I mean, the first year would be this coming fiscal year, let's say. So right now, you're just anticipating asking for one more person to implement this for now, and then if it takes off, you'll be asking for more.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And how many folks do outreach in your office?
We have a staff of five, and we all do outreach. So basically, in a conservation district program, we would assign a staff person to work with that community organization, and then they would be responsible for that outreach.
So in a given year, how many applications do you get? Or how many new historic designations are coming up in a given year in the city?
We, our rate of local historic district designation is about one every two years.
Okay. So if it goes from one every two years to 10 a year, clearly, your staff in its current capacity, even adding an additional person would not suffice. Would you agree?
We would agree, but we would schedule and manage the creation of conservation districts to manage staff.
Okay, so how many would, if this bill were to pass, how many new districts would you anticipate applying per year?
That's a hard question, but I could see in the initial phase, we have interest in three, four neighborhoods right now.
Okay, so if all four of those neighborhoods, and I assume more people will hear about it as this process continues, but if we're just talking about those four neighborhoods, that's about eight years' worth of work that you guys currently do, if you're doing one every two years. So by increasing that amount, if you were to have to do those four in the next year, would you be able to do that with your current staffing?
If we had a new staff, if we added one staff person, we could definitely do four. But I would also state, too, is that, you know, our process is thoughtful and deliberate. And what I mean by that, sometimes it takes years. I mean, we've had some neighborhood, neighborhoods go through local historic district designation, and it's taken four or five years. So there is a, there's a way to manage that.
Sure, go ahead, Councilman Torrance.
So just to understand what the chair is saying, what is your current span of control for each staff person? So how many neighborhoods each staff person responsible for? Or how many historic districts is each staff person responsible for?
Well, we have 38 local historic districts. You know, some of those districts, we do 150 authorizations, two proceeds a year, and other local historic districts, we do one. So the way that we work it, and there are some staff folks that do primarily nothing but historic district designation review of the ATP applications, that's what they process. There are other staff that do that and do historic research and do landmark designations and do other things like that and worked with Wreckin' Parks. So we have a staff of five, and we work very carefully to try to get them what they need. We need more staff. I mean, there's no doubt about it. We could do so much more if we had more staff.
Could you send us a capacity map? And I'll be like detailed for the administration for this. So director, staff persons, responsibilities for each person. That's helpful for us as a council, because if we're going into a budget season, we recognize that, I'll give you an example. Lauren has two of my historic districts. One is a really small one, and then one's a really large one. And they both have different planning commissions. And I've been trying to push them, compact them into one, because one committee is more efficient with the larger people than take six months to get one done for a district of six houses, right? So I think that I would like to know the capacity each staff person to, because there's conversations that I'm having that help me, too, because a number of the things that is going to put a wrinkle in your agency is when, sorry, Jason, when Jason's agency finally goes live with a new permit system that no one ever seen right now, right? That's actually supposed to work and be better, right? So that permit system may throw off your entire staffing level. I'll give you an example. I was just with the fire department. We're talking about a fire on West North Avenue in terms of the fact that if we do renovations with the Codex buildings, I'm now going to have to request through housing that there be a flag in Codex buildings, so that if somebody does pull a permit, that we make sure they do stabilization first, so that they know that I'm not putting sheetrock on a house that's going to eventually fall in one day. And I mask all those things, because the new permit system. So I think that that would be helpful for me as a person who's just more organizational management, to understand, like, you as director, all four of your staff persons, how they're spending it, because that's helpful for, I hate to say this, the city has a record of burning people out. And we just went through, and I just went through our salary alignment across the agencies, too. So if we're adding new staff, we need to be intentional about what staff are you being added, because I could tell you, one of your divisions in planning, I think, does nothing. And you could take some FTEs from there and just give them to you, right? Those are conversations that we can have, because as we're looking at the budget and working with the administration on cuts, we can talk about cutting FTEs and moving them other places, just in case you may need some FTEs, because there are some people in planning that need to get a reclassification somewhere else.
All right, I look forward to you proposing that during the budget process.
And Mr. Chair?
Mr. Holcomb, one other question I have, and this is a question that's come up to me multiple times from some of the CHAP districts in my district, and I have never been able to get a clear answer on how to do this. But how do you reverse these designations? So once it receives a designation, and then folks realize that they're not just getting free money to renovate a property like they may believe they're getting, and then they start seeing some of the challenges, the complaints that we receive in our offices within these areas, and they get a full picture once they've tried to go through it themselves, and they determine that they want to reverse this designation, how would they do that?
That would, that would absolutely take a city council ordinance of some sort, and I don't know how that would look like.
So are you saying that I can introduce an ordinance at the city council level to remove a historical designation from my district?
I think so, yeah. Now, I don't know what law would say about that.
Well, law, I know what law would say. Law says no. They say once, which I guess we can wait for law to come back, but when I've looked into this on behalf of community in my district, I think it was actually, your team said that the fact that it got the designation meant that it is historic, so now you can't just change it and say that it's no longer historic once you establish that it is historic. So are you saying that you can reverse that? And if so, I'd like to know what that process is.
I can say CHAP cannot reverse it. Now, I don't know, and I do, and city council may be able to reverse it, but I don't know. I'm not, I would have to ask the law department.
All right, I'll wait for them to come back. In the meantime, who's? Oh, you're with the law department? Okay, because she was speaking of half the law department left.
Yes.
So please.
We've been tag teaming. This was not my bill, but I'm happy to look into that, and we can get back to a response on that, as well as any due process issues regarding notice for the designation.
So are you aware of any way currently to reverse it, or?
I am not, but I, this wasn't my bill, so I will follow up on that.
Gotcha, okay, thank you. If you don't mind, because we're going to take public testimony, if you can just email whoever's bill it is and ask them if they're aware of how to reverse it, that would be great. Yes, Tyler?
Just for the record, I do want to flag that obviously there's a tax credit component of this legislation. And there is a concern that the more relaxed requirement could possibly have some impacts that we definitely want to be considered by the Tax Credit Work Group. As you know, their final recommendations will be presented in early 2025, but we certainly want this to be a part of that.
Okay, so the work group you said is in 2025?
Yeah, that's the timeline being communicated right now.
And they're going to provide recommendations on a program like this?
Yeah, they're looking at all of the new and expanding tax credit incentive programs.
Gotcha. Okay, we'll now go into public testimony. Did anybody sign up? That's... Okay, I just have one person signed up here. Johns Hopkins. Are you the official?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That is my name, although I do believe there was a woman here, Crystal Parker, who had signed up ahead of me. I don't know what happened to that sheet of paper. And I'm happy to either cede my time or go after her.
It's okay, I can call her up next, that's fine.
Okay. So thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Johns Hopkins. I'm the Director of Baltimore Heritage. We're a nonprofit organization. We work to try to help neighborhoods around the city, historic neighborhoods improve. I'd like to just quickly share two points. One, I was eating lunch yesterday with a friend of mine who said, you know, on the eastern shore, one of their greatest resources is farms, and they have a whole slew, counties have a whole slew of policies around farm conservation. In western Maryland, one of their greatest resources is forests. And counties in western Maryland have a whole bunch of policies around forest conservation so that forests can work for the current generation and for future generations. We don't have farms in Baltimore City. We don't have forests. One of our greatest resources is historic houses and historic neighborhoods. And up until now, we've had just one policy to protect historic neighborhoods, CHAP districts. And so we've had this one-size-fits-all since 1960 with rules that really haven't changed since the 1960s. And as I travel across the city, the number one thing that I hear is, why can't I get the same benefits in my neighborhood? It's just as old, it's just as historic. Why can't I get it? That's not fair. And for the first time in 60 years, 70 years, we now have an opportunity to change the one-size-fits-all approach into an approach with conservation districts that makes sense for many, many more communities, so that the benefits of being in the historic districts, the tax credits, the property values, the sense of being part of a steward of history, the community building that ensues, that can, we can have more Baltimoreans take advantage of that and more different types of neighborhoods that deserve to have our support that currently are more or less locked out of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And it's great to put a face to the name, so.
I cannot claim responsibility for any of the institutions that bear my name.
Next up, Crystal Parker. Is that, I believe that's who you said?
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Crystal Jackson Parker, and I'm a resident and leader in the Greater Rosemont-Coppin Heights community. Today, I'm here on behalf of Coppin Heights CDC, along with several community members. You can signify by raising your hand. To testify in support of Council Bill 24-0576, introduced by Ninth District Councilman John Bullock. This bill proposes additions to City Code Article 6, Historical and Architectural Preservation, and calls for establishing conservation districts, providing a study, proposal, and review process, and defining certain terms and providing for a special effective date upon enactment. On October 10th, 2023, I testified before CHAP regarding the importance of establishing conservation districts, and specifically identifying the Coppin Heights community as a designated pilot corridor. Please note that this request in designation control is in the Grace Plan adopted by planning in June 2022, 2006. For the past two years, on behalf of the Coppin Heights CDC, I've led the boots-on-the-ground conservation district and pilot conversation. This included community walks to amplify several of the forgotten gems and historic landmarks along the West North Avenue corridor. In fall 2022 and spring 2023, in surveying our neighbors, providing information, and engaging in conversation, we found a great deal of public support for this concept. Since this time, we have also engaged and found support from other communities throughout the city. Most significant is the support in favor of the increased equity that conservation districts would bring to underserved neighborhoods in our city districts would bring to underserved neighbors, neighborhoods in our city as it relates to historic tax credit usage. Baltimore has researched the establishment of these districts several times before. However, the CDC is now in the forefront of this latest effort because we are proposing not only the establishments of conservation districts throughout the city, but a pilot conservation district for West North Avenue. We have a very active revitalization product, project. We are developing homes as well as partnering with other developers throughout the city. The CDC leadership has also met with several elected officials, including Councilman Torrance, who also provided favorable testimony before CHAP, and Councilwoman, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, and in both instances, found support for the general concept of conservation districts and our pilot. Understanding the ultimate need to engage in a presumptively time-consuming legislative process, our request to lead the pilot gives us the opportunity to work out any unforeseen dis, difficulties or challenges. Let's be clear, the overall goal and objective of establishing conservation districts in Baltimore City is equity. Since the exception of historic districts, they have, they, they have served as an instrument of institutional racism which locked out black, brown, and poor communities throughout the United States. Sections of particular reference in this bill that I believe provides fluid movement to mitigate the impact of these practices include subsection two, two point nine, which speaks to CHAP's purposes and proposed funding through annual appropriations. And also, in, uh, lowercase two, re, recommending that the designation of and providing for the perpetual protection of these conservation districts as designated under subtitle three. Also, in subtitle two ten, incentive improvement programs, it reads, "Subject to appropriations by the ordinance of estimates, CHAP may contract with owner or leasing of a structure that is located within a historical and archit, a CHAP district or, or conservation district or included in landmark list to reimburse that owner or leasing up, up, up to 20% of the cost incurred by him or her in the reconstruction, alteration, removal, repair, or painting of an architectural feature in a manner that further the purposes of this article. This speaks to the vital resources to property owners and support for community growth and sustainability." Subtitle three actually codifies the conservation district in this, in, in this article, in Article Six. And finally, Article 28, taxes and subtitle 10, tax credits. Subtitle 10, eight, historic improvements, restorations, and rehabilitations defines historic property as, as meaning, and I'll go down to points, um, four and five, located within a city historical and architectural preservation district or within a historical conservation district and certified by CHAP as contributing to the historic significance of that district, or, five, included with the, within the boundaries of a certified heritage area. This provides a much-needed level of individualized discretion outside of the bounds of the most stringent requirements that have precluded underserved communities from taking advantage of historic property tax credits. This speaks directly to the economic stability, generational wealth, and preservation of our community's great history and cultures. The CDC has already begun to work to ensure revitalization without displacement. The aim is to create new and maintain former legacy and history of time and place. We ask for your favorable vote of Bill 24 dash 057 to establish conservation districts in Baltimore City. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And, uh, thank you to everybody who came out to join us today. You're welcome to come back anytime. Um, we don't usually get this much attention at a meeting and so, uh, we welcome you to come back for any, any bill or any council meeting. Um, I don't see anybody else signed up. If there's somebody I missed that had intended to sign up or signed up, uh, please feel free to, uh, to step right up. Going once, twice. All right, that, that concludes public testimony. Um, thank you all for joining us today. Uh, we will await the responses, uh, from this and then we will reconvene, uh, this hearing at a later date. Thank you so much.